All waiting to your order.
President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, long nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can definitely miss through any questions or directions or motion to approve the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes, they're second. Second. They're second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Okay, approve of agenda. Any questions?
Motion to approve and father update.
Okay, we have a motion to approve agenda, they're second.
Oh sir.
They're second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Visitors and delegations. Anybody want to address the commission? Because it's not on the agenda. Evidently not. Okay, first thing we're gonna do is go into the Sandpiper Pipeline Representative, Katie. A good closer. Hobjager.
Nailed it, right on the head.
Yeah.
I'll give you some information here too.
He's gonna give us some information on what their line is. It's all like they're not gonna start meeting until early 2016, around 16, that's right.
Yep. I'm gonna walk through, I just print out a presentation that's going to the yellow front there. And then there's also some more information that I'll just walk through very quickly so you guys know what you have in your hands. Just on that very first page, for your guys' reference, as you see this application and this project move forward or information and materials from Enbridge, you'll see that it's coming from North Dakota Pipeline Company. So I wanted to make sure and include a slide in this about why it says North Dakota Pipeline Company and not Enbridge. And that's because of Sandpiper Line, we did get a committed shipper through Marathon Petroleum. And through that commitment, once this line goes in service, Marathon will also be a part owner in our assets in North Dakota. So because of that, Enbridge and Marathon then renamed the assets, North Dakota Pipeline Company LLC. So it's still gonna be operated wholly by Enbridge. To our standards, to our regulations and our requirements, nothing of that will change. All of your point of contact will still be Enbridge individuals. Marathon is just now a part owner. Very similar in how we are a part owner of Enbridge Pipeline, but we don't operate Enbridge. So just for your guys' reference there. You know, operated in the area since 1962. I'll skip through that next slide, because I think a lot of us do realize, of course, the benefits of having pipeline infrastructure in place in comparison to, you know, many other modes of transportation. But then also just, you know, the bigger picture of getting back and crew to market and being able to get it refined and get that commodity out. So on the third, next slide there where it says Sandpiper Pipeline Project with the entire map of North Dakota and Minnesota, that gives you a picture of where our line, the blue line, that's Sandpiper, where that's located in conjunction with the red line, which is our North Dakota system, and then also Enbridge's main line. So it just gives you a big kind of overview of the Sandpiper Line. A lot of me being here today is just to give you a really, you know, kind of here's where we're at. It's probably been quiet, or you maybe haven't heard from us in a while. And a lot of that is because we're waiting on the Minnesota permitting process. We're cleared to go in North Dakota aside from some of the local permitting, township and county. Outside of that, there might be some environmental permits, I think, that we're still waiting on in North Dakota. Otherwise, we can kick dirt, is about where we're at. We have pipe delivered to our pipe yards. That's our longest lead order item, so that's already in the ground, because we were hoping to start construction this year. But we'll actually be starting construction in early 2016. So that pushes our in-service date to early 2017. So it's just a quick overview of Sandpiper. If you flip this slide or flip the page, it just goes down to that county. Then it just kind of continues to zoom in for you. And a lot of this is reference material just for you. I probably won't walk through each individual township and where it goes, but it just gives you an idea of that mapping. I went through the timeline itself, so I mean looking specifically Ramsey County, you've got about 34.4 miles of pipeline. That'll be coming through specifically your county. When you look at that map, you do see, of course, that we are quite a bit farther north from where the black line is, which is our existing line 81. And a lot of that deviation is naturally growth, but then also flooding. Trying to move farther north of where Devil's Lake Flood Plain is already at and trying to get out of that area. We did look at a even more northerly route, but pushing the line even more north started to impact far more environmentally sensitive areas when it comes to wildlife versus wetlands. And there was an increase in smaller wetlands as well, the farther north you went, actually. So we kind of settled right into that sweet spot in the middle of the north. But I think if you go a couple more pages there, it goes to Ramsey County. You'll see that list of new townships that we're gonna be operating in. So these are all new townships that Enbridge doesn't currently have lines through, because we are again going farther north out of like Irving, Lake Alice area. And those townships we have been in discussion with, and then we have another meeting here at the end of March to meet with those new township, new townships we'll be operating. Just give them an update on the permitting process, see if they have any questions. Any questions about road crossings, haul roads, or anything like that. A few more things that might just be good for your guys' reference. Hopefully, late 2015, we'll probably be coming back, talking to the counties, talking to the townships on those haul roads. Essentially, we'll set down a map and together we'll highlight what roads you want us to be using when we come out to string pipe and start taking that to the yard and putting it into the ground. We're hoping again, mid-year, when we talk about those haul roads, that we'll actually be filing those road, for the road permits and ditches. There's six road permits that we're hoping to get from Ramsey County Highway Department. Four ditches and 33 township roads, and there's one state highway road. So 40 roads overall in Ramsey County and four ditches.
By ditches, you mean like a Cooley or a Watershed or something like that, is that what you mean?
Yep, yes. You know, and I can email this as well, but for your guys' reference, after, throughout that North Dakota PSC process, we did do a lot of back and forth with PSC on Devil's Lake, the flood plain, and a lot of research on buoyancy of the pipeline, how that reacts, you know, whether, if we want to add more mitigation in, where we want to place our block valves. If you go to the North Dakota Public Service Commission's webpage and pull up our docket, which is PU13848, there are four different exhibits there, or docket numbers that you can click on. All four of those are specific to Devil's Lake. And I can even email those if you wanted to reference them more easily, but 61, 74, 76, and 81. And again, I'll provide this to you. But those four numbers under the PSC are specifically documents that talk about Devil's Lake, again, the flood plain and the research that we did that came out of that Public Service Commission hearing. So if you've got questions specifically related to that, they're good reads, if that's something you're interested in reading about, so. You know, then the next few slides, just it drills down even closer specifically to all of the different townships that we operate through. And I think the last few things that I wanted to make sure and touch on was point of contact. If you have any questions or concerns on the project, or just, you know, want some information on where we're at, please feel free to let myself know. I left my business card was in that stack as well. Any issues related to permits, Rachel Johnson and Claire Cunningham, which, you know, those who need it should have their information, but again, I'll provide that in an email. And Megan Raffold, she's our local right-of-way agent, so if people have questions about existing operations, they can either come to myself or Megan Raffold too. So I know this is just kind of a very quick update. Again, we're on kind of a waiting game right now until Minnesota permits the project. We don't want to build anything unless we know the entire project can be built. So at this point in time, we're just kind of making sure that everyone knows that we're still around. We're still pursuing the project, of course, and we're just waiting until we hear from the Minnesota PUC. And hopefully, early 2016, we'll get some construction work in this area for folks. So the rest of this information in this packet, the orange file, that was second, that's our 2013 Operational Reliability Report. We've got questions about our integrity of our system, our existing assets, maintenance, all of that, and our programs are all there. The gray brochure talks about pipeline construction, that process, how it would work. There's a really nice diagram there that breaks it down exactly what that process looks like, step by step. And then the last piece is also about our community investment program, which, that's a program that I manage out of our Minot, North Dakota office. And I highly encourage the commission and even those in attendance, if there's projects here in the area, we have staff in Grant Works and staff in Minot. So I kind of rely on locals to contact us if there's programs in the community that we should be involved in. We are more than interested in doing so, we just don't have a normal front door, so just give us a call.
What kind of projects you documenting?
You know, I wrote down some of the ones that we recently supported. Devil's Lake, the Sully Hills Education Classroom that the kids do, we donated $5,000 to that last year for some new equipment. We donated to the fire department, I believe we donated a fire truck to the fire department this last year. Not a fire truck, but a pickup truck. One of our old fleet vehicles to the fire department this last year. Lakota Childcare Center, just down the road, you know, we made a donation to their group. Minot, we've done a lot of volunteer projects. Surrey, we built a permanent ice hockey rink for the community there. So your typical community investments, we have a three categories of well-being, environment, and community, where we try and give back through sponsorships or time and talent to our employees, so. And you can always reach out to myself if you've got questions on that program.
We had a couple of questions on the process. How far along is the state permit, are they done, or?
We are done on a state level.
North Dakota, you're done?
Yes, so the North Dakota Public Service Commission, they grant our route in quarterly. So the route has been approved in North Dakota. I don't know the exact percentage of like landowner acquisition in Ramsey County. I would venture it's 99, not 100%. I think there's only two or three landowners in the state that we're still waiting to work through. And other than that, you know, we'll have some game and fish, some air permitting, some other Army Corps permits that we'll have to, those are continuous process kind of as we go through the construction.
How deep will the pipe be?
The pipe will be buried approximately, I think it's four feet from the top of the pipe. I have to look to make positive that that's the depth covered. But we're regulated to bury it three feet from Finza. And I want to say between three and four feet is typically where it ends up being with Enbridge Pipe. That will be different under ditches, under township road section lines, it'll be much deeper. I think the most shallow you can go into there is probably six feet, and then it gets deeper. Now, in the floodplain area, I can go back and check with our engineering if it's going to be even deeper yet. I know they did a lot of research if there's going to be water overlay, if there were to be flood or in flood zones, but put what they call buoyancy saddle bags, which is basically gravel and then it's metal tied to the pipe. That'll hang over it to help try and prevent that buoyancy.
Does the Enbridge line have that all the way along, no?
Only in water body areas.
Water body areas.
Yep, yep, flood plains or areas, there could be heavy water cover.
And basically, the Enbridge line lays in the railroad right away, is that correct?
The current, yep, current line 81. And some of the work too, I'll just touch quickly. We build pipelines, but we operate ours too and maintain them. So you probably have seen work and heard of our integrity dig work that we've been doing on line 81. That line does follow the right-of-way or the rail delivery closely, it's built by Hunt Oil in Burlington, Oregon. So it stays pretty close to the tracks right there. So if you see anybody working in the ditches, it's probably that they're doing an integrity dig, which just means that we've sent a tool through our line, it's come back and told us maybe it's not quite as thick as it was when we originally put it in, or there could be a crack or corrosion. And we've gone in and we've actually sleeved a new section of pipe over the top of that pipe. I don't know the number of integrity digs that we've had in Ramsey County. I know line 81, we have done quite a number of them. And mostly because it was built in '62, so we're just making sure that we're going in and ensuring its reliability, so. There's more about the integrity dig process in that ORR report, if you want to read up about it, but yeah.
You know, one more question I have is somebody's right out here saying numerous times, oh leaks they've had in North Dakota. How many leaks have you had in Enbridge?
Oh, history of Enbridge, I couldn't tell you. I don't know that I have our North Dakota numbers. I want to say so far this year, we've had two, just in 2015. And those two are what we call weavers. And weavers basically means they went in to do that integrity dig. And when they sandblasted it, basically what happened is you could take a cloth and you can wipe off the oil as it comes out. So it just sweats oil, is what that's happening. Our next, the second one, it was non-reportable, so it doesn't have to be reported to the response center or anything like that, because no oil hit the ground. And those tools were actually able to discover a bubble between the pipe and then the coating. And when they cracked that bubble, there was just, I mean, I think it was .01 gallons that they estimated of oil out of the pipe. So that's how small they can zero in on it. I think our largest spill in North Dakota has been 500 barrels, ever, if my history is correct.
Good to know. You got other questions from the commission?
Can I get the pass sent to me, please, Betty?
Sure. Do you want to email me your address?
Yeah, I'll email him my address.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mel. Katie, we're gonna have a planning and zoning, county planning and zoning meeting, the 11th of March. Were you, is that the one that you were referring to when you said that you were gonna be at a meeting?
Um, it's not. March 24th, if I'm thinking correctly, is Ramsey County Township Officers, we're gonna meet with them.
Yep, right.
March 11th, I will be in town though for Rotary.
Okay.
So I will be here if you guys plan to meet and you're interested in chatting somewhere.
As close to us on this March 11th bill, we just talked before you got here that I wasn't so sure. We needed somebody in planning on this one as far along as this is in North Dakota, past the permit. I don't know what we can do locally as far as, Kevin was aware of a lot of the things here that were gonna happen as far as the meeting, I'll take the blame for that. Last time we should have probably asked Kevin, what he knew about it, but I don't really know if we need our zoning. Just to update the manual and maybe put in some, get some wordage in our manual or planning zoning manual or something like that as to how to deal with permitting pipelines.
Yep.
Get back information from other counties and stuff like that, how they've been handling it, but yeah, we're kind of benign on that. But it never hurts to get caught up and put in. I'm not aware of any information we got from Town or Nelson, did you?
This is what I got from Towner, that I mailed out to everybody, but I don't know if you guys read it.
Yeah, I read that.
Not aware of Nelson, did they get anything from that?
Nelson said they go by what the state recommends, because they get admitted through the state. And I think Benson probably was the same.
Well, we just got a little word from Benson, right?
Yeah, it was just a little word, but I think I just sent it out today.
Well, I think it probably stayed with the state's giving our permitting in Ramsey County, if you didn't read.
You know, I mean, I think the best option probably would be, I can put you in touch with our permitting folks, because they've got experience across all the counties that the line is gonna be running through. So they can maybe give you an idea from our perspective, or from a pipeline perspective, what's been working as a smooth process and maybe what is a little bit more bumpy or cumbersome on both ends, so if that's helpful for you guys.
Just wanted you to know that we have a planning and zoning meeting scheduled for that, so.
Do you have a time?
Seven o'clock.
I think that's right, we decided.
And if we could add her on to the list, will we send out the agenda? Any other questions? Adam?
No, I don't want to, I don't want to.
Mark? Okay, well, thank you very much.
No problem, and this is probably a very simple question, but do you guys prefer to get updates paper copy or by email?
Just send it to the commission, I think would be the best route.
Okay.
If we meet again on the, what day we're gonna be in March?
It will be March.
Third or second?
Okay. It's really.
Tuesday.
We're gonna try and internally get our stuff together where we can update you guys as per the construction in the county and how things are going, probably on a month basis or something, once we actually get our feedback underneath us here with permitting and everything.
We meet the first and the third Tuesday.
First and third Tuesday, perfect.
So if you have any information you want us to get, I'm sure that would be soon enough for.
Okay.
As long as you're basically 10, 12 months out till we even start dating.
Yeah, we are quite a ways out, so. But with that being said, don't hesitate to give me a call if all of a sudden it pops back into your mind again and you have a question and where you pick up the information and think it's something, please let us know, and we're always available.
Okay. Thank you very much, ready to get on your way back to work.
Thank you.
Well, without the movement to Stacy, Queens Veterans Service Officer's Office Furniture Day today.
Yep, back in budget time, we had, I put in a budget for 800, and then you guys went ahead and doubled it. So I've gone shopping and we're ready to purchase. I understand that after the first of the year, we have to get permission from the commission to spend over $1,000, so that's what I'm here for.
Okay, we did have 800 in the budget and we went ahead and doubled it?
Yep.
We doubled it to 1,600, but of that 1,600, 250 was for a cost share between.
The 250 was actually an office expense.
Right, but that, we took the 250 when we do that cost share for your Burram. But we'll just have to take it off a different line.
Okay, okay.
And we'll just have to really watch the budget so we don't go over this year.
Yeah, well, I think that's the only expenses I should have, other than conferences for the year.
So I mentioned to Stacy that at the beginning of the year, the board meets and decides anything over $1,000 needs to, even though it's in your budget, needs to be pre-approved by the board of county commissioners. So I asked him if he would come in and present his bill. And it's 1,600, so if you guys are okay with it, we just need a motion in a second to go ahead and approve it.
This is stuff we need in the office, Stacy?
Yep, yep.
It's new office furniture, he's got some of the oldest furniture in the building.
Yeah, I've only got three doors in there, and that's been the problem right from the start, I got too much junk in there that.
I'll need to allow these, though.
A motion to allow the Veterans Service Office furniture, about six feet under, or whatever. They're second?
Oh sir.
Second, another roll call.
Martins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Hypon?
Aye.
Isler?
Hi.
Brown?
Aye. Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Steve, all computer purchases. Steve, you go ahead.
I'm just looking to replace my five-year-old desktop. It's the one I use every day. It's starting to slow down. Just, I think, with 15, 154.
15?
Yeah.
You got that in your budget?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Steve? I have a motion from Adam.
Second.
Three seconds?
Okay, Martin.
Second. Another roll call on that.
Yes. Hypon?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
Isler?
Brown.
Brown.
Okay, thank you, Steve. We have a bill coming, only highlighting.
Yeah, I just have the one thing for this meeting. I sent a Excel spreadsheet of what our costs have been in the past for waiting and what we've charged in the past. Well, I won't bore, I won't bore that with everybody, but unless you got a specific question about that.
When was the last time you won?
We've been going up $5 a year for the last four, five years, four years? Yeah, $5 a year. And at that time, we met with the Township Officers Association. They agreed that it would be better for us to go in smaller increments rather than have a huge increase in one year, so that's kind of what we've been doing.
That's what they wanted to do, yeah.
So I'm proposing that we raise our rates another $5 per hour this year. So it'd be $2.35 a mile on the contracts and $110 an hour for government agencies and $120 an hour for private.
Any questions for Kevin?
So we're moving, we're, you want to raise those numbers $5?
Those are the, that was, yes, and those numbers $5.
Okay, so it'll be $2.40, $1.15, and $1.25.
Yeah, correct, yes.
Motion to approve it. Motion to approve the increase in waiting rates. Is that second, we have a second? All favors say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carried. Anything else, Kevin?
Yeah, we do have some updates of Paul wanted a mention of our projects, what we had going in the past, just to bring everybody back up to speed again, shouldn't take too long to go through this.
Yeah, I guess our Ramsey County town, we've got 20 and a half working days remaining to finish the budget in the spring. Close to center stockpiling, 9% of their contract commodities sitting in stockpiles up there. So they're 89% complete, but that's really not really quite reflective of what they actually put on the road. So the materials there, hopefully they'll be able to get some good weather in the spring. Truck route, working on with utilities. Most of them are just, yeah, we require asking permission from the utility owners to work within their segments. Most of them have pre-existing segments. The only one that I think will have any cost for would be a cost share with Nodak Electric. They've got the pole or the power line on the north side of the road, they're impacted, but a few other poles. But a lot of them are within the statutory right-of-way. So there's only two that need to be moved that would be a cost of progress, I guess. The rest of them, there's eight other ones that either don't need to be moved or they have moved at Nodak's cost. They're thinking about going underground from US Highway 2 over to feed the farms and all. So I guess that's being discussed, but I just want to bring it to your guys' attention of that, just coming along.
It's going all right, then, Paul?
Yeah, yeah, they've been pretty responsive, got ahold of everybody. Even the college even has a power line that goes through, way up to the wind tower. Still getting ahold of those folks, so New York is interesting. I guess the surge bill, some projects possibly for this upcoming year, I guess we're just wanting to be thinking about which, we'll get a priority of the commission made out for that. You know, it hasn't happened yet, but I mean, passed up seven, eight. Sounds like the DOT is really in favor of it, local government, you know, it's local. They want to get it pushed through, so. I guess Kevin's flag of your plan, you've got Ramsey County 8, from our last year's project, the rest of the way through Lockman up to see another one. I think that would make sense to go there next. And you've got Ramsey County 9, from Ramsey Ford to the Wall Street line. It was planned to go 18 construction, but you know, that's another option.
What's the, what's your other option?
Ramsey 9 from north of Edmore, from Ramsey Ford to the county line going east.
That's gravel, right?
No, that's big now, but it's, it's, that's an option. What we're trying to say is we need to start thinking of projects, if the surge bill does hit, they're gonna want a program right of way.
Right.
So just clicking into your mind, but what we want to think about doing with this surge money.
I've heard a lot in Bismarck about shovel-ready projects. Do we have one?
No, we don't. Our quickest one could probably be the other part of the truck route, I mean, survey work, most of the survey work is done.
We'd have to do the survey work to be shovel-ready, is that correct? What do we have to do?
We have to get design and then have a design so that betters can bid on it, so people can bid on the work.
Have to bid on it just immediately, more or less.
That's what you mean by shovel-ready and something, you can just take off the shelf and bid like within three weeks or four weeks or.
We don't have a project that way. Should we have one?
That's what we're thinking, we need to, yep, get this in place, provide.
Would it take long to have County 8 ready?
No, we actually done surveying that already, because we were originally planning on building that all the way through.
Okay.
As part of last year's project.
Right.
With that one though, I guess it depends on what you do with your federal aid money though. We've got, I think, around $70,000 carryover from what we had before. With that one though, I guess it depends on what you do with your federal aid money though, we've got, I think, around seventy thousand carryover from what we had before and then I think was two hundred and twenty thousand here?
Yeah. That was projected, though, that wasn't?
That was an estimate, right, and that depends on what the federal government does too, I guess.
Yeah, with the new highway zone, you don't know where the federal money is going to be on eight, but.
That's one of the big hangups that in Bismarck is the federal aid, if it's going to get there, you know, it's going to show up. Then the other hangup is Martin.
Right.
You know, they're really, uh, valuing over how much they need, they claim they got everything shovel-ready now in there, according to their mayor, so.
In Fargo? Yeah, there are probably a few steps ahead of us, and everybody else as far as I'm concerned.
Should we have that bypass road shovel-ready?
I'd be like, that's a good, was a good candidate, we need to be in contact with refinery people too, but, yeah.
Yeah, can we get eight and have bypass road ready within a month, could we?
Well, I would say no, but we can sure try as hard as we can.
And I guess it depends a little bit on what funding you want to use for, I mean, if you have to go ahead and do the design work, then you don't have to wait, but if you're going to use federal aid, you have to do an RFP. And we don't know what the requirements of the surge funding is going to be, whether it's, whether that's required in RFP.
Okay, let's, if we could do county aid, set it up similar to what we've done this, this last year in funding.
Well, not one, we use federal aid on that one.
We did use, and that.
We didn't use any state money?
Some, we used both.
Yeah, it was both, both, I think it was one of those both.
I would think we should get that one ready.
That would be a relatively inexpensive one too, I mean, I don't know if there's any more color work to do there, there may be one small color, so otherwise, it's just pavement.
Because I think we can put projects in front of our representatives that are in Bismarck, you know, and carry the ball for us. I'm afraid right at the end that this is when that surge money is going to get out. I, I don't know, it's not going to get out this month, I don't think it's going to come out until after that projected revenue in March. And that's, what they run to, twenty-fourth?
I'm not sure, the cross, you're talking about crossover?
No, crossover, it's end of this month.
End of this month.
But that projection of when they're, how much, you know, oil revenue they're going to have in the next two years, and I think it's the twentieth or twenty-fourth.
Some twentieth is the magic day.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what exactly.
I don't think any funding passed out until after that.
So after March twentieth?
Yes, I think that's my guess.
It's going to have lots to do with the appropriations.
Kevin?
It's going to have a lot to do with the appropriations of all the bills, I mean, not just this one.
Absolutely.
That's why I think you're probably right, you won't see any definite stuff going on until after the.
That, until they hammer out how much money they're going to have.
Exactly, revenues.
What the commissioners think, yeah? You think those two projects are what we should work on?
Well, I mean, as things we probably have the best ability to rate for, there's nothing to say, you know, it would be there. I did all that, so it's going to depend too, where we think the fun, you know, what the funding levels are going to be, we don't have a clue, so.
They don't, so.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying.
We're just guessing, a lot of their representatives down there are guessing also.
What, what's it going to take to get the truck route ready?
Well, because with pieces that you do, I guess, I had some estimates put together a while back, but um, I guess what I would probably do first is put additional gravel on the part that we're grading this year, we've only got six pitches and plans.
Just to interrupt you here, you're talking about just having a shelf ready, not, not, I mean.
Having a shelf ready, having a.
Some engineer work, get some more design, and that's what we'll be hung for, I mean, we'll, we'll have to pay that, whether we get surge money or not. Is that what you're asking, or?
Yeah, basically, what we have to have, to have it ready to go, right?
Oh, I see.
And then how long are they good for on the shelf?
Yeah, well, once the environmental stuff is done, I think, I think you have six years for the.
Six years?
Environmental, and we've already done that for that route, so.
We definitely plan on definitely done, you know, in that time period anyway, so.
Yeah, so I mean, that's not.
You already had part of that staked anyway, that corn part.
Yeah, we just went through and safety limits, landowners know where it's going to go.
So my question is, how much do, will we have in design work for those two projects?
Well, essentially, what will it cost and, and like you said, a month probably isn't feasible, what, what kind of feasibility, I mean, in terms of time will it take to get it ready, I mean, if it's impossible?
What do you think? Go ahead, Paul.
I think a month or two, or I guess for design, getting the designs together, it depends on if there's environmental stuff we'd have to do, if there's more color replacements, then there's, well, then mitigation probably. Or at least we'd have to do a delineation.
Right, yeah.
How long a stretch is that on that bypass road that's left? Mile or what is it?
Mile, one point one, I think, we're at two point three and then three point four overall.
One point left, one that's left, though.
Yeah, so, to the start of the, we're, we're close as jobs starts.
We've got no plans on that.
Well, we've got.
Who would serve the work?
We, we did the, all the ground survey, but we, and we have, I guess, stuff to purchase the right ways south of the Carebridge property, and there's quite a few different owners in there. We did a plan and profile, we've got some rough quantities, because we came up, you know, we came up with a rough cost for it, so I mean, it's not too far off that way. Environmental's done, I don't think it'll take too much. But the, I think the main thing, I, I guess we're, my priority at that one would be to put some more gravel on, on the truck route, the part that we're doing now first, just so that holds up. Because there's going to be some more traffic there, I mean, refinery says they're coming, coming in from the south for most of their stuff, but there's, there's going to be loads going west, east. What I'm expecting.
Okay, we'd have a better shot at getting, you know, ample federal aid money for aid to get, right, than we will for that truck route?
Well.
The federal aid money?
You can use it wherever you want.
Yeah.
But how much federal aid money is going to be available for that truck?
Let's just say two twenty-five, and that's, that's being optimistic, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. There might be more, but.
That'd be federal aid?
Yeah.
And county aid we doubt?
I don't know, figuring real high, it'd be a million, total project.
Well, I think we should have both projects ready.
I think we've got to have them both ready.
And then this one?
What would we lose if we had them both ready and it didn't go through?
Just the engineering?
I think that's the question.
Design work?
Design work, we'd end up, the county ended up paying that.
And, I don't know, what, what do you think that would cost, just off the top of your head?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, let's just say a hundred and fifty thousand, that's probably really, really high.
Really high?
Yeah.
For both projects?
For both, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should go.
The paving money, I think, would only be, you know, twenty, thirty probably, and, uh, depends on how the right-of-way goes on the south end of the truck route, I guess.
Yeah, what do you think, go ahead, Kevin?
If, if we just put it on a shelf without the, the right-of-way part of it then, it's considerably less. I mean, if we didn't hire them to go after the right-of-way until we were sure we were getting the money, uh.
Yeah, well, if we just did the great, like, if you did a project where it was just grading out, in Carebridge property, through the curve, and then graveling, I, I guess I'll probably gravel the whole thing, all to the highway and get it. So you have.
No, do I have this right, do you have the right-of-way, past the curve?
Past the curve down to the end of Carebridge property, right at the north end of Stratus.
I didn't hear that.
You do have the right-of-way?
Yeah.
We do have that right-of-way, Mark.
Yeah, that's north, the north.
Down how far?
The north, uh.
Down the Stratus property.
Yeah, north's half mile there.
But, well, I think Stratus is going to be a problem.
No.
No.
Well, hey, okay, let's go back to shovel-ready projects, what, what's the definition of that? Have it, have your right-of-ways bought up, so they're ready?
Ah, good question.
I would think so.
Yeah, that's my question, is in the past, when there's been surge funding, what, what's been the criteria?
You have to have the right-of-way in place before, you can bid it, but you can't award, shouldn't award a contract. Contract can be contingent on right-of-way being urgent.
Yeah, I would, that'd be better.
Do you have any inkling that we're going to end up with a mess in the right-of-way like we did on?
No, we think the only one we need to get is Stratus.
Well, there's someone on the west side.
There's someone on the west side?
There's six or eight different property on there still.
Oh, there is.
And, and, and the thing with doing that is, we don't know for sure if that, what's happening with the refinery, so we don't know what their loads are yet. You know, say if, say if that gets built, that's going to probably need to be quite a bit wider and, you know, heavier asphalt section will get planned for the rest of it.
We're not going to have, what, five or six inch now?
Well, at least, I think we're at five on the, with just the ag and concrete production going.
I don't believe there'll be any problems if the refinery is going to go through, they'll be, they'll be throwing money in, so.
And that's, Kevin, I talked about that earlier today too, I don't know if they're, if they would, if we would probably just want to go ahead and get what their anticipated traffic counts are going to be, putting in and out of there and designing for that. And then have them just get in, or I don't know if they're going to want to build it themselves, I guess they didn't know what to say.
Maybe we should just design it for Ramsey County's use right now, the way we're going to use it, you know, and if need be, in six months, a year from now, refinery is going to go through, then we'll say, okay, we designed it for our use. Now, if you're going to put this many trucks over at this weight, then we're going to have to go to a hundred and five-five, right, Kevin?
Uh-huh, and, and the, in the past, the surge money has been, you have to go to a hundred and five-five. So I anticipate it will, that way, yeah.
I think we should just have a couple of projects ready, because Fargo has really thrown it back at the West, where they don't have their projects ready, they don't have them shelf-ready or shovel-ready, they do not have them ready. And, you know, that's going back and forth all the time, so I think we should have a couple of projects ready.
Uh, we'll start working on that.
Okay. Is that the rest of the commission take, Mark?
Yeah, it's built, yeah.
From now, we'll just do those two, and then kind of see where things go from there.
Are you all ready now?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just to have it ready, maybe work on eight first, and then we'll get a, we'll get a better feel as to, because as I said, if they got the zoning in place, that the refinery would probably want to have some input in on that whole story.
And eight would probably be the quickest one to get done, also to have on the shelves, so.
Yeah, that would be. Any other question, anything else, Kevin?
Okay, well, I'll give an estimate here for that, and if you can ask me.
Very good. Thank you. With that, we'll move into Rhonda. Do this updates on House bills. You've been at Bismarck for two weeks?
No, no, I, I actually was only there last week for a couple day, three days, for the Senate Bill twenty-two seventy-one, and I actually missed twenty-two oh six, it was yesterday, and they snuck it on the calendar, but it passed, um, forty-five to one. Joe Miller from Park River was, apparently didn't listen to the governor, so I don't know what will happen to him.
He doesn't do anybody.
I, I don't know him, so. Um, whoops, okay, we just passed those around. Um, I'll just quickly, that's all the bills that Social Services is tracking, there's five copy there, so, and then here's a summary of that.
First two here.
Thank you.
I can just start with the House bills that Social Services is looking at, there's a ten twenty-nine that's related to child abuse and the Black Law changes, and that's just some cleanup for human trafficking, and they'll hear a lot about human trafficking, and I think there's like six or seven bills that a lot of them are related to, um, the most important one that I see is cleaning up our child abuse and Black Law so that they're, the child is seen as a victim, and also not, a child that's being trafficked is not trafficked, is not prosecuted as a, for prostitution, because that's how they fall right now, the way our law is written. Apparently, we're about twenty-five to thirty years behind on that, so. Um, the next one is, if you go on the sheet that's color-coded, if you see the green is the ones that have passed the House. Um, ten thirty-nine is health insurance coverage, coverage for substance abuse, this is what, um, this came about as the Affordable Care Act, better known as Obamacare. Our state chose to do expanded Medicaid, our governor did, um, we kind of sat on it, thinking that it wasn't going to happen, that the Supreme Court was going to say, no, you don't have to do it. And so did our insurance commissioner, just really didn't do any preliminary work, um, surrounding that, and what happened to us, our legislators, legislators went in and took the lowest possible, um, substance abuse treatment reimbursement for Medicaid expansion that they could possibly do, so then Blue Cross and the Shield just matched it, so if you are having a Blue Cross and the Shield policy, your substance abuse treatment went down, less days, less treatment coverage, and they're trying to fix that. So that, that's kind of interesting to watch, it's coming, it came up, it came up on the thirteenth, um, Friday at nine thirty, and I, I don't know the answer to that yet, so I haven't had time to go look. Um, eleven oh eight, if you turn the page, and I have it, um, just the ones that I was going to talk about, just changing the official language from a developmentally disabled individual to an individual with developmental disability, which is going to change a lot of our forms, I know it doesn't seem like a big deal, but it is. Twelve ten is going to cause us some heartburn if it passes, this came about from a foster parent who decided that his, the children that he was caring for, he and his wife were caring for, were returned too quickly to the biological parent, and he wants some transition time. And then in, in the, you never know what's going to happen, when it got into the committee, the Human Service Committee, they said, well, if we have to transition them back home to the parents, we have to transition them when we take them into custody. Which, so the bill reads that when a police officer or a social service agency is taking a child into custody, which is usually an emergency, they have to do a transition plan, which makes no sense at all. So that needs to get fixed, um, I'm not sure what's going to happen that passed out of committee, so. Um, the other two bills, twelve ninety-one and twelve ninety-five, I wanted to talk about, and I, I didn't mention them, those were actually related to public health. And it was increasing coverage for Medicaid to two hundred percent of the poverty, poverty level for women to receive birth control through family planning, that was defeated. And twelve ninety-five, family planning for families covered by medical assistance, that would be another revenue source, and I, I think that was just really, really overlooked. It was not presented to our legislators at all as property tax relief, because when we don't have a federal funding stream, and that's written into our state plan for Medicaid, we just choose not to do that. That means that it's covered by local costs, our, we still serve those folks, and our health department provides that service for nothing, so that's frustrating.
Which one?
Uh, twelve ninety-one and twelve ninety-five.
Ninety-one.
Um, they failed out of the House, and I think they were presented as, oh, one more thing we're going to cover, but really, what happens is that falls back on local taxpayers, because they don't deny anyone services at public health. So you're going to pay for it one way or the other, so they might as well have a billing source, and when we've written our North Dakota State Plan, we're very, very conservative with that, we have chosen not to cover those folks for birth control, which is, in my mind, craziness, so. Um, I should probably be quiet about that, but that's how that is, so I don't see that getting revived at all, I'm not sure. The next one that we're tracking is thirteen fifty, and I wrote in there, um, this was an assessment center in the Lake Region, it was, was sponsored, or was heard in the House of Representatives Human Service Committee. And local people there are Damson from the Munich area and Hofstedt from, Kurt Hofstedt from our area, he actually carried the bill, him, Dennis Johnson, Kurt Hofstedt, Senator Elke, Vickerson, Senator Mather, sponsored the bill, this bill was drafted, um, by our legislative delegation by the request of Judge Fauci, and Judge Fauci orchestrated many, many meetings to find, to find out our needs and let's support and organize an effort to provide this service for our region. Um, and Representative Hofstedt did a really good job, um, introducing the bill and articulating the need. Um, Patty Reimy, Tom Reimy testified, Judge Fauci did too, and it was, it was very good, they did a good job talking about the poverty and addiction issues in our area, and that plagued our overall region, actually. And I, I wrote this to our Social Service Board members, you all know, we've talked about this here, we end up sending kids about a hundred and fifty miles away, we remove them, we drive, 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 only to move them again, because that wasn't the right place, because we have no way to assess their needs, we get them at two o'clock in the morning. So I was really hopeful about this, um, because they're, the placements are often done with out good assessments, just by way they need to happen, and I know Paul knows that, it's just, we need a place right now, and it's not, it doesn't always have to be a good fit, but that's how it is. Um, they reduced the debt, the bill down to four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars from seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, they reduced the debt, the bill down to four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars from seven hundred and fifty thousand. So, it could bypass appropriations, 'cause I think that even the House of Representative members wanna avoid that committee like plague. And, um, they did it with a few other bills too, and they, it got defeated, it was actually close though, so, about forty-five to forty-four, or forty-seven to forty-eight, so that was interesting, so it, we're hopeful that, um, Kurt Hofstadt, Representative Kurt Hofstadt can get it put in somewhere else, so we're still hopeful about it, but for right now, it got defeated on the floor. So, that was disheartening, to say the least. So, um, going on, we had, um, going on to that, oh, excuse me, fourteen ten dollars for Head Start. Again, that's really important, social service agencies, they're our partners, um, and we, we just really haven't, um, North Dakota is one of, I think, two or three states, Alabama and Mississippi, that do not fund Head Start state level. And that, or, right, through our, um, yeah, through our state, we don't provide any additional state dollars to early childhood education. And it's just very much a, um, evidence-based way to look at, to, um, see that children for themselves, kids go to Head Start, graduate from high school, are not on the rolls for, um, SNAP, Medicaid, they tend to have higher education, um, and tend to keep a job, so. Um, again, I think we just don't do enough education about that, so hopefully, that got, that was another one of those bills that they refused, you sound to four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and then it got defeated, so I'm not sure what will happen with that. But, that is a shame, with the money that we have in our state, we don't fund that. Um, our school district has, is, has actually stepped up a little, a little bit, as much as they can, but it would be nice to have some state money in that. Going on to Senate Bill twenty-one seventy-seven, um, this was very important, um, I was there, this was interesting, because it was heard in the same committee appropriations that the surge people were coming, and they just kept coming and coming and coming. The commissioners from the western part of the state, they filled the Green Hill, Powell and Room in the back, and pretty much anywhere you could stand, sit, or be, was commissioners from the western part of the state, I, I, I think, I mean, I'm guessing. Um, so that was interesting, twenty-one seventy-seven, um, is stuck, I think? Or it passed the House, excuse me, it passed on the floor, and it goes on to the, um, House of Representatives, that would be more difficult. And that's really important to our workers, because right now, they work in seven different systems, and they have three screens. When they approve someone for Medicaid, um, SNAP, which is the food stamp, old food stamp program. So, it's very important, the head of the Human Services got up, Maggie Anderson, and said, this is something that is a long time coming, we've worked on it. In true North Dakota fashion, we tried to do something together with technology we already had, and we have a mess. We're not working in a cloud, and that means they, they, um, transfer manually data onto this cloud, and then they have to man, manually transfer it on to another system, very cumbersome for the eligibility workers, and it takes them a lot of time. So, they wanna get fast-tracked this, so they can put out an RFP, which is a request for proposal to get money, so we can go ahead and buy that system right away and get it up by, hopefully, um, June.
Okay, that's a forty-six million dollar one?
Yes, it is. I wasn't gonna mention that, Myrna, thanks, no, I'm kidding. It's a lot of money. Um, I think they've spent almost that with something that doesn't work, and so it just makes more sense, I think Maine, Kentucky, um, a couple other states are using something, they hope to just buy it, which would make more sense in the first place. Um, and then, uh, the next one I wanted to mention to you is twenty-two oh six, which is the, the property tax relief for Social Services. This sum is transferring a social service program cost, foster care sped, which is the elderly program, family preservation, from the county to the state from one one sixteen through six thirty seventeen, and it provides for counties adjacent to an Indian Reservation or the state hospital to apply for grant funds, which is us, to offset the increased service cost and more valuation, I know, we've been talking about this for a long time. Um, the fiscal note projections indicate this will be about twenty-three point two million dollars will be transferred from property taxpayers on the county on to the state, so it's huge. Um, it was really interesting, the person that introduced it was at Dever, and I, he, he did a really, really good job talking about how, this is a reform, not just property tax relief, this is a reform, this is a way to, um, the counties have no control over these, these, this money, especially foster care. Judy Lee, um, Senator Judy Lee talked about how, when we swapped out that complicated formula, which we talked about sometime at Social Service, sometimes at Social Service Board, um, meetings, of how the counties pay foster care, which costs us a lot of money, um, was a great portion of our budget. Um, was supposed to be a state cost, and then ended up falling back on the county because of the way it worked. Um, so, that, it passed the Senate, excuse me.
Rhonda, would you now, that's one of the past forty, just buddy Adams?
Yeah.
Forty-five and one, huh?
Yeah, or forty-five or forty-six, is it forty-five and one, yeah. Um, that's where Joe Miller voted no, and I don't know what, what the scoop was on that. So, um, oh, it also, I have to get this in there, that it also provides for a study, so that we can look at the gradual, um, way the state can take on more of the cost for social services. And one of the main focuses, and I've been impressed, 'cause this is something that county directors and county social service folks are really worried about, I don't know so much about commissioners, but we really wanna keep the services local, because vulnerable, vulnerable people who use our services can't drive to Grand Forks, they can't. If you live out in Rock Lake, to drive to Devil's Lake is a huge burden. So, um, we're pretty impressed that that's been a, a focus of keeping the services local. Um, okay, and then the end one, uh, the, the last one, excuse me, Senate Bill twenty-two fifty-three, to expand home visitation. I'm a big proponent of that too. Um, home visitation is where, um, a home visitor goes into a family and visits like either a nurse or a social worker or a combination of both. Again, very evidence-based, there's lots of national studies on these kids also, and this is a zero to, um, a three program usually, and then Head Start picks up, so that's, I mean, there's a lot of information on that, I won't get into that, but it's very, a very good, um, program that I think is in trouble with the lack of funding. Okay, um, I also wanted to men, mention that, um, oh, there is a bill for, and I think it passed, study, twenty-three sixty-seven, the Study of Substance Abuse, Substance Exposed Newborns. Our numbers for twenty-fourteen at the Mercy Hospital tricked down, um, eighty-three births out of three hundred and forty-four total births, newborns moms that had an illegal substance in their system. So, that kept us pretty busy, we visit all those moms to make sure that they don't home their, I don't wanna go into the exact number of deaths, there were some deaths related to that. It is a huge issue, that's twenty-four, I think it's twenty-four percent of all the births in our hospital are born to moms who have meth, amphetamines, oxycodone, um, some marijuana, although that's not our big, mostly the illegal substances and drugs that are not, um, prescribed to none.
I think that was twenty-fourteen?
Yeah, that was last year. We just got that. Um, and that's, that's it.
Any questions, Rhonda?
The color-coded one, those are the ones that I try to track, but. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much, Rhonda. If you need, if we're enough, you can. Stick around after seven. Okay, that, South Minnewakken Township, township discussion. Here from.
I'll start.
Your supervisor, Kevin's supervisor?
Kevin is the, the time supervisor is too much.
Okay, very good.
Um, some of it is an FYI for your information, and I have some questions to ask the county commissioners. Um, basically, what I need to bring in front of you is, um, is an issue that was brought to me. On Tuesday, January thirteenth, I was at a township meeting, as a board member, and at the meeting, we discussed some zoning that Bill Mertens wanted to do. And as a township board, we decided to send his request to the zoning committee. But after the meeting, Bill wanted to meet with me, so I agreed. Um, we met in the same room, in the basement of the courthouse. And after some discussion, and Bill seeing that I didn't agree with everything he said, he said to me, be careful what you say, meaning at the zoning meeting, because you are in violation of the property tax exemption of a foreign residency, which I did not know at the time. I actually asked for the paper, and as I was reading it and pondering it, I realized that he was threatening me to be quiet at the zoning meeting. And I don't take kindly to threats. Um, at that, we ended the conversation. Approximately two or three weeks later, we did have a zoning meeting. Um, and at the meeting, there was a number of people who voiced their opinions there, and I was one of them, because it happens to be close to where I was at, so I was against it. Um, but at this meeting, I wasn't at the end of it, but Kevin can, or Kevin, Fred can answer these questions. Bill took the camera, and when they were voting, held it in each one of the person's face, I was told, and Kevin will refer to that, which I think is intimidation. So, on to February tenth, which was.
One question, a video camera?
Yeah. On February tenth, at our next township meeting, we discussed the findings of the South Minewakken zoning meeting, which they gave to us, which was a denial for his zoning permit. So, after discussing, as discussion, as a board, we denied Bill's zoning request. And after that, Kevin asked for any more agenda, and Bill stood up, and threatened to take the boards and turn us into the Attorney General's office for improper conduct. And again, he singled me out as being in violation of the property tax exemption for farm residents, which I also took as another threat. My question is, how does a township or a county commissioner have the right to threaten because he has the power? A resident. Is that fair, or is that right? With this, I have filed with the Sheriff Department, and Steve can vote on this or whatever, a complaint, which will be sent to the DCA, Bureau of Criminal Affairs, for improper conduct of a county commissioner. Also, when he left our meeting that day, he was mad, and he went down the hallway, and Jerry Ratslaw was, happened to be in the coffee shop, also caught Bill's wrath in the heat of the moment, which I don't think is very fair. And these, most of these people are here, and will say what happened to them and occurred. That's what I have to say. My question is, before everybody gets going on, is, as a township, are we able to talk amongst each other as commissioners or supervisors?
At the meetings, I'm sure.
But what if, what if we have a snowstorm, and somebody calls me and says their road is blocked? Do I have the right to call Kevin Fred, who needs to call Kevin Fieldson?
Ronnie?
Well, when you start getting into emergency situations, that's, there is emergency provisions in the public records and public notifications and things like that, so. Every time something like that comes up, it, it's really a case-by-case basis as to what constitutes a public meeting and what constitutes an emergency. So, it's, it's really tough to give you a one-size-fits-all answer as far as the public records, the public notifications, and public meetings laws. As far as emergencies, you know, when you've got somebody with a road blocked, you know, you gotta have a, gotta have a, a quorum of township officials to make an official call on whether you send out, you commit township funds for, uh, emergency expenditures, so. Things like that do come up, and those things are built into the public meetings laws in, in Title forty-four, or Chapter forty-four. So, other than that, uh, you really can have to look at that on a case-by-case basis.
So, if we have a problem with a gravel road that has a hole in it, we need to discuss it? I mean, common sense says, yeah, we should, but somebody told me, common sense was illegal.
Well, it.
Wow, I mean.
When you have emergencies come up, you know, like with, with county officials, it, emergencies come up, something happens with Kevin, a, a road blows out, and they've got a, we, we get a hold of the county commission, uh, if we have an emergency, we, we try to follow the law, uh, to the T. Uh, when, uh, when we do have a meeting, obviously, the press is notified as soon as realistically possible.
But you guys can do that, because there's five of you. Ed can call Mark, Mark can call Adam, Adam can call Bill, but as soon as I talk to one of my board members, I'm in violation, which to me, is common sense that, I mean, when you're in a township, you need to, you know, you can't go have a meeting every time you need to discuss some stuff. So, where is the fine line, because I think we're gonna be micromanaged from this point on, and I want you guys to tell me where the fine line starts and stops.
Well, I think.
When it comes to legal advice for the township board, you're gonna have to, you know, I can tell you what, uh, the state law provides for, uh, school districts, for, uh, townships, for cities, to ask for a, a legal opinion in writing as to your legal duties, but as far as giving you legal advice, I can't do that. I can tell you what your duties are, but I can't tell you, give you a lot of legal advice.
I would, I would recommend Tom as a township, who are the chairman, which one's the chairman? Leave it up to him, let him call Kevin.
But what if I got a road call? Should I just tell him to call Kevin?
Might be a good idea to do it that way.
The way, the way that we've been operating this in the past, and we've never really thought twice about it, until this thing with Bill come and threaten us for possibly having illegal meetings. But, anything that we had decided on as regular business during a regular board meeting was already decided. So, the, the actual handling of those issues, if it took two of us to decide, and it's already been voted on and determined that this was, that the work was gonna be done, if there's two of us, that need to be, decide just exactly how to do it, that that's just maintenance work of an issue that's already been decided in a public meeting. And during a township officer's meeting one time, they explained it to us, that any time you're doing work that you had already previously decided on, and the two or three of you are meeting out on the road discussing which way it should go, gravel it this way first, and then that way, whatever you're doing, you're just doing maintenance work of an issue that's already been voted and decided and publicly discussed. And that's the way we've pretty much handled business, and am I right in that thinking?
Well, I, it's a common sense way to do it, you know, you can't turn around and have a meeting every time, you know. Yeah, like Myrna said, it snows out, or you gotta put a snow, you gotta, or plow the roads, you know, get somebody out there to do it.
Ninety percent of our work concerns township roads and the maintenance of the township, uh, infrastructure, so. A lot of that is already decided, we have a, we've already voted to do, uh, summer glating, or we've already voted to do snow removal, and the issue comes up at random, where a road is blocked or something, we've already decided we're gonna plow all these roads and spend this money. So, it's not like you're going to spend extra money or anything, we're just doing maintenance work on previous decisions.
Sounds good to me, Kevin, Bill.
First of all, I don't know how this got to be commission business, because it's either personal or township. But, that being said, I can answer your question on, uh, is that a three-member board, uh, constitute a open meeting when two of them get together and talk? And, you know, it might look like it was, if you're talking over township business or something like that, but, I mean, you can talk to each other after church or anything like that, and in fact, I did a lot of research on it, and in the committee notes, when they made this rule, they're trying to exempt township boards, the three-member township boards, because they, they know that they gotta talk to each other. So, um, no, it, it really doesn't constitute. So, no, it, it really doesn't constitute a meeting. That doesn't. And that really wasn't what I was referring to when I told you that I was gonna contact the Attorney General's office. But I don't believe that this is county business, so I'm not gonna get into that. But to answer your guys' questions, no, I don't believe that you guys talking over township business or whatever is, constitutes an open meeting, an open records violation. In fact, there's a lady by the name of Mary Kay Kelch that works at the Attorney General's office. It came here, and she's came here more than once. Most recently, probably two or three years ago, down in the basement, she had a meeting on open records and open meetings. And the way she started it out was quit calling me. Because, because she's, they get plagued with phone calls over this issue. This isn't the first issue for South Minnewakan Township. It's happened many, many times in the past. And, and, you know, that's because we're the fastest-growing township in Ramsey County right now. We went from $10 million to $37 million in just a short period of time, and it's all because of development, so if you got some qualms. I wasn't there as a county commissioner telling you what to do. I was there as a PAC leader. And, and an applicant who is zoning changed. It didn't have nothing to do with my county commissioner job.
I gotta kind of disagree with that, with your comment to Tom where, where you handed him the county regulations on taxation of farm buildings and told him that he was out of compliance and you were the person that could make sure that that got known to everyone.
It wouldn't have mattered if I was a citizen or who I was, Kevin. If we wanna start talking about the farm residence exemption, I'm open to that. Let's start talking about it. That is county business.
That's not the focus of the conversation.
Yeah, it is.
We should let Jerry talk, I think, next.
Yeah.
See all that.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jerry.
This isn't the first time that this discussion has came before the county commission. In fact, recently, there's been a lot of this discussion on farm residence exemptions.
Well, let's not talk about farm residents. Let's talk about the point-blank statement that a county commissioner made to you. Is that correct or is that incorrect?
Well, Bill stopped in the coffee room downstairs on the way out, I'm assuming, and he just seen me sitting in there and said that the next day at the assessors seminar, I should tell the assessors to all send out the farm residence applications to everybody. And I just said, no, I don't think I'll be doing that because that takes a little prior planning. And Myrna and I have been talking about this for some time. In fact, I watched the video of you guys' meeting a while back when she brought it up at a county commission meeting. And then also, Ed and I visited here within the last three weeks, probably in my office, and Ed told me, no, we're not sending those out. So now I've got two commissioners coming in my office and giving me exactly-
What was the last thing I told you, Jerry? You will not do that until the commission directs you to do it. Is that correct? That's the last thing I told you?
Yeah, that is. And that's what I said too. I'm not doing it.
And until the commission addresses this issue, you will not do it. And until the commission has decided what to do.
Well, let's get it decided.
We're not, it's not on the agenda. We're not doing that. What we're talking about is a commissioner going to the basement of the courthouse and coming up to our tax equalization person and telling him what to do.
If we wanna continue to break the law, commissioners, if we wanna continue to do that, like Jerry said, this has been brought up many, many times before. And we put money in the budget to hire somebody to help to get these things straightened out. All the companies around us have already done it. Why are we the last ones to do it? There are more than 12 farmers, farmers that are paying taxes on their residence within a half a mile of this exemption. For the same reason.
How many years you been on the commission, Bill?
Ten.
It's been exempted every year you've been on.
Why now?
It's been exempted every year you've been on.
Why now, after you've entered on the commission and your personal knowledge of the law, are you throwing this at Tom Merton's head?
Because-
I don't understand. You don't-
Because, because when-
Something with a certain person. I'm gonna have my say here.
Go ahead, bro.
If and when this commission determines that they are out of compliance with farm home exemptions and we need to get it straight, then we will, in my opinion, do it across the board. We are not gonna go off half-cocked threatening one person. That's not how we do business. We're not the tax police. What we are is the board of commissioners. We make policy. We don't threaten people. We make policy. We give them the option and the opportunity to become in compliance if that's what the problem is. And I don't appreciate knowing something for two months and being told how I'm gonna do it when you have known for 10 years, Bill, at least what this law is. And now all of a sudden, you decide you're gonna use it as a weapon against someone. I don't appreciate it.
You know something, Myrna? This isn't the first time it got brought up. This got brought up at the January 6th meeting. And after that, somebody came to me and said, what about your neighbor? What about your relative? So that's why I brought it up to Tom. And I did say, and I did say, that if you're gonna stop development to protect the tax exemption that you don't deserve, then I will have to say something. If he wants to take that as a threat, that's, that's his business. I can take his suggestion that he's gonna send me to the Bureau of Criminal Investigation as a threat as well, so there you go.
No, I just took it to the chair, but they do it where-
That's a threat.
Oh, I just filed a complaint. It's not a threat, just a filing.
Oh, I do.
I think it is a direct threat to one of our supervisors when you hand him a sheet like that and single him out and tell him that, by the way, you'd better think about this zoning issue of mine. You are in violation of the county tax codes with your house and you'd better think about how you're gonna handle this.
Because that's the reason why it's not getting zoned.
How do the two issues coincide? How do they relate to each other?
You know, you know how deep it is, Kevin.
Bill, it's an out-and-out threat and it's illegal as far as I'm concerned.
I don't think we should be talking about personal business or township business at a county commission meeting.
You can think whatever you want. You can think whatever you want, but this is a serious issue.
It's not the county's business.
And I filed a complaint along, at the sheriff's office, right along with everybody else. So it will be investigated.
Okay with that? I like, we just send Kevin and Tom. Let's see where the complaint goes. It's been filed. We'll see what the investigation does and then we'll bring it back to the county then, so is that agreeable?
Plenty agreeable. I, I would like some direction. Tom asked you guys a question. If, if somebody could give some more direction, maybe at the Township Officers Association meeting.
That'd be a good thought there, Kevin. Really good thought.
If somebody could get-
Somebody to come up and give a little-
A little more definition again on illegal meetings. Because we don't need a county commissioner threatening our-
No, you don't.
Little board that's dealing with township roads for God's sakes. Zoning issues. I mean, we don't need somebody micromanaging us.
Okay, let's leave it at that. We'll wait till we hear back from Sheriff Nelson on complaints.
I'd like to put farm residence exemption on the next county commission meeting agenda.
Just for the record, can I ask what Steve Nelson has done with that complaint?
We referred it to the Bureau of Criminal Investigation. Since it's an outside agency, so they can-
So it's, just so that everybody knows-
And that's, it's all beyond me. I mean, we aren't involved in it at this point, other than just referring it to them because it was brought to our office. And what they decide to do is up to them.
Hey, Kevin?
Yes?
Would you like to contact Dennis Miller and see if he would like to have somebody come up from the Attorney General's office to speak to you guys on open meeting, open records? Cause he's the one that's holding the township officers' meeting.
Okay.
And that would be a good person.
He's the chairman.
Yeah, he's the chairman. Cause he's having Enbridge come in at that meeting too on, I think it's March 24th, if I'm not mistaken. So maybe contact Dennis Miller and see if he can have someone come up and talk to everybody.
Excellent suggestion. I'll contact him as soon as I know it.
Okay. And without moving to new business approval of the homestead credits?
We have five of them running. You don't know if you're aware of them all? There's three from, there's three from the city.
Do you have any of the other three?
I can sure send you copies. I, I think you got, you got three, but two more came in since. One was the one we were waiting on, the death certificates to get reported, and then Beth brought me one. So the three you got scanned, but there's two more.
They all look in order?
They're all in order. They're all qualified for the homestead credit, which gets three of yours by the state.
Is that fine with you, Myrna? Okay.
Yeah, I got them all.
But they're, they're in line.
Yeah.
Motion, motion.
She mentioned you.
Myrna did? Okay. Got a second? Okay, so I'm on Mark. All payers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The discussion on House Bill 1058. Is everybody aware of that one? On the-
Corrections?
Corrections, yeah.
Did have a public hearing, I believe, last week. After the public hearing, they did amend it to take out the quota provisions.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
That's the only concern that I'm having with this.
The Association of Counties that they took the quota provisions out. So when did that occur? Uh, I believe it was Friday.
There's only four, there's only four counties that are still involved in that quota and it's Caff, Burley, Morton and Williams.
Yeah, and what that's about is a pilot project for a recidivism reduction project that the Department of Corrections is proposing. So at this point, we all know with the legislative process, they are better Dr. Frankenstein than reviving that something that's already dead. So we always gotta watch that, but the Association of Counties, the Sheriff's Association has took a very strong lead role in this in trying to oppose the quota process. It was very ill-advised and I don't think it was very well thought out as far as a, a way to try to push the state's correctional cost back on a couple of counties.
But they're gonna leave four counties in it?
Yeah, that's for a-
A pilot program?
Reduction pilot project. They're looking at putting some monies into that. And we're not in that pilot project and that's fine with us.
Did that, did that take out in committee or on the?
It was, I believe there was a motion to amend in the committee. And I've, I've read through the amendments and it looks like we should be safe at this point, so long as it's not resurrected by anybody along the way.
The conversations I've had with our legislative representatives, that was their main, they go that we just need to get that part taken out of that bill. So even if it's taken out now, I think we're gonna have very strong support for that to try and get put back in on the other side, even after crossover. Cause I know all three of them, you know, I've been trying to keep them, that's a very important issue for us because the director of the DOCR did single out Burley, Morton and Ramsey County has the three that are gonna pay the most out of this, that portion of that. So that I've been trying to keep our three, and our three have done very well. And in fact, I think Mr. Johnson said that that, that part just needs to be taken out. It sounds like we've got that accomplished so far. And it's great to hear this before crossover. Cause usually when it gets to crossover, that gets, gets harder to- So we just need to keep a close eye on it. And I know we discussed this quite, and our sheriffs said we were very strong against this part of that, so I'm glad to hear that it got taken out.
State's Attorneys Association was there opposing it too. But when the bill came up, they only allowed one person to speak. And Larry Erickson, who's a state attorney in Losport, spoke against it.
Aaron Burst was also very vocal that he thinks this is a bad for the Association of Counties and it wasn't representing the counties very well either, so we're, we're doing our best to try and keep on top of it.
That's good to hear. Judge Bowdy brought this information down and he's, he wanted us to discuss it at our county commission meeting, but I'm sure we got this information from you two and, and that's good to hear.
Yes, that's very good for us. As long as it remains out, that's what we need.
There's a legislative update too that's gonna be happening out at the college on Saturday from 10:00 AM until 11:30. And all three of our legislative representatives will be there, so-
This Saturday?
This Saturday, yeah.
That's not crossover yet, is it? No, it's the next.
Another week after that.
Okay, very good. Anything else Lonnie to add on that?
Nope.
Okay. Ramsey County Housing Authority board appointments. You sure you wanna do this?
And then the last two meetings.
We need a motion.
Got a motion to approve. Got a second? All payers say aye?
Aye.
So I'm sitting here.
Drug and alcohol updates. Who's giving us that? I mean, that was on there.
It's basically, I put a sheet on your desk. It's they're increasing our testing fees by $5 per test over 2015, 2017 year, so I just want the board to be aware of that. So, and there's the base rates and all that. It's through the Association of Counties. It's global. Safety Network is doing it. And we put all the names in and then they draw it at that.
How often do they test?
It's random.
It's random. It's quarterly.
We don't have, we don't have to take a motion on this, do we?
No, it's just for your reference, so.
Okay, discuss fiber line project with the city of Delma.
I just got this because they were sending it to the wrong email address, that they want a fiber optic line from the city to the county's North Dakota website, which would have to be a line going up into, so they can access nd.gov because they're, one of their deputies has all the lines and everything over there. The project is 16,0274. And I don't know if they're going to ask the county to pay me this, but I just want the board to be aware of it that I'm meeting with them tomorrow at 9:30. So I think the city should take care of the cost because we have our lines in place. But-
How do they do it now?
They, I don't know how they're doing it. They must just go through a mode.
I think it's, I think it's a VPN. Once again, what they're doing is they send their traffic tickets. You know, we're all doing it. It's all online now and I think it's a similar way the LEC does it, is that we go out of, I think it's a VPN, isn't it? Because we're not, we, we are, the LEC isn't on the state backbone either. We're not on the nd.gov system either, so we send it the same. And PACT is the one that moved over here for the city court, and now I think that's what they're, they have to hook up to get easier to get onto that nd.gov.
They want this line to go over to their city offices building? Is that right?
That's what they want, yes. Because the courthouse is on nd, on nd.gov or nd, the nd system.
And this is what the work deals, this is what the cost would be.
So where are they pulling it from to from to where?
We did it here.
Here, this is what Steve-
Well, they, they pull a fiber optic line from here to their office.
I was just asking Steve if it would affect our bandwidth or anything. I, I don't know. It shouldn't.
No.
Why don't they just use VPN? It would be way cheaper. It's like 10 bucks a month.
Cause it's a pain in the butt and it doesn't work very well.
Steve, maybe that's what they'll decide tomorrow.
After, yeah. But I just-
Explain to me what's happening, Ed. Up here, upstairs?
There's a-
Is that where it's at right now?
The line from the state comes into the state's attorney's office and we gotta run a line from up there over to the city's offices. So with the, coming through here and all here, cross.
Can't just send their cars out of trees?
So we have, we also like that.
I know.
The capability to tap into their system here. That's what they want, is that cable. It's like, they don't have a thing.
They sent us that memo and then nobody-
They're tapping into the trunk at the courthouse, taking a trunk off, but basically-
Yeah, they just wanna trunk off our, our system.
But they have to run it through our, our center to get access to it always.
There should be no need for us to be in the financial for that, right there.
You know, God, if they want it. Can we got it? They want it.
I just want you guys to be aware of it. I'm meeting with them tomorrow also. That's all.
That's it? You're gonna, you wanna go along with the show or is it?
Uh, no.
Or you're gonna come back to the commission?
I'll come back to the commission. I don't have to have to do anything. They have to pay for, but I'll bring it back to you guys.
Sounds good. Anything else? Any announcements?
I have one small one.
What?
A horrible one. Our museum director has put in her resignation. We are currently looking for a new museum director. I don't know if anybody knew that, but-
Was it married or something?
No, she accepted a job back in Goo Bay, Wisconsin.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, Tom.